Meeting called order. Have a roll call this day.
Dr. Robinson here, Mr. West.
Here.
Dr. Buck here, Mrs. Ware here, Mr. James.
Here. Everybody in prison. Uh, before we adopt the agenda, anything that needs to be added or taken away from the agenda? Okay, um, uh, the attorney want us to move eight point one A, eight point five, eight point ten, and eight point fourteen to the table six. We got some notes for us.
So good.
Second.
You want me to be second all in favor? Pass is five zero.
I don't know if you will adopt that agenda?
Huh? Yeah, well.
We adopt that agenda, that's a meeting.
Second.
And move the seven all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass is five zero. Yeah, public comments, you don't have any recognition in presentation. Five point one, Ms. Reynolds. You want?
Not for the recognition, for the.
No, what's about your data report?
Oh, data.
Okay, that's it. I think you better get your paper.
Good afternoon. Mr. James, Superintendent. Uh, this is our first monthly update, um, for MBE. And at this point, uh, we don't have the benchmark, um, data for the first nine weeks, but I'll discuss the attendance and discipline with data that we have. For the month of August, we had six hundred and six students enroll. The student eighty-eight for August was ninety-four point one percent. The number of students with two or more accesses for the month of August was one point five percent. Our teacher attendance rate for the month of August was ninety-five point five percent. And for the month of August, we had, uh, fifty discipline referrals. Uh, for the allocation, we did get approval for our application. And so we will receive fifty-three thousand nine hundred forty-two dollars for being schooled and proven for TSI. Uh, we have not received it yet, but, uh, we have been approved to get it.
Okay. And it's good, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. James, before we proceed, I do want to recognize the, you can have to see, recognize the, uh, administrators who are in the, uh, attendance today. One of our goals for this year is to make certain that, uh, our administrators are present in, um, board meeting. So today we have starting with back road, Shalonda White, who is the Assistant Principal at Morgantown. You know, Ms. Malita Bassett, Assistant Principal at Natchez Middle School. Yeah, Miss Chantay Timmons, who was Assistant Principal at McLauren. Dr. Hayes Harris, Principal Natchez Middle School. Dr. Tony Martin, Principal Morgantown Elementary. You have Katie Weston, who is Academic Coach for MAPS, uh, MAPS is Adam's school. You have Ms. Shalisa Brown Taylor, who is Assistant Principal at McLauren. Dr. Latoya Hamer, Principal at West, Mr. Hoover, MAPS options. Of course, Mrs. Reynolds, um, Natchez High School.
And Ms. Walton.
Did I get it? Ms. Walton is online. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
We're gonna rotate them. Yes, sir.
All right, we had you all here. Okay, let's go to approve amendments, approval for August twenty 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 four special call meetings and approve our August twenty regular meeting meetings. Let me get approval.
So moved, second.
Moving the seven all in favor. Aye, pass is five zero. Okay, item number seven, you have a constant item, anything that constant item that need to go to action item at this time, but not, can we get approved?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
And moving the seven all in favor. Aye, pass is five zero. Okay. Eight point two, eight point one. But we can, uh-huh. So we're gonna just go and do eight point one, eight point one eight in there because we're only moving eight point one eight. So, let's do the eight point one.
Good afternoon, Mr. James, Members of the Board, Ms. McDonald. On behalf of the Superintendent, the Officer Penner Residences is presenting a Personnel Report Report for Thursday, September nineteenth, twenty twenty four. Do you have a personnel report before you, or are there any questions in regards to the items that you have listed before you? Section A, Section C.
Mr. James, um, I think what we're gonna have to do is take the entire item because some of the items that need to be discussed are on this, um, recommendation. We have to take the entire.
Section A does coincide with eight point one eight.
Yeah.
Okay, then we're gonna move the whole thing.
We've already approved.
Yes.
Oh, okay. My baby. I must feel sad. Okay. Eight point, eight point two, come on.
Good afternoon, as you do by the Board, Superintendent. We have in front of you item eight point two. Does your approval of plain document, seven sort of financial report? You have the claims, Dr. Foulter, dated August sixteenth, August thirtieth, included within your bonders. Additionally, the August twenty-four financial reports, his budget, and the positive capital project summary on tax full of people. If there are any questions regarding the Board of Trustees, approve the formal meeting document. And accept the financial reports, the required reports, and is presented to the board.
Some notes.
Second.
Been moving seven all in favor? Aye, pass is five zero, eight point three.
Eight point three is the approval of the debt service fund amendment. We are presenting a budget amendment to increase the operating transfers out of debt service fund. It is understood right now in this scenario, and this budget amendment will rectify the error. Are there any questions about this, uh, this transfer out for the debt service fund? That's what it is. The line is just lower than you would have been, instead of being higher, like how the error after this, after everything took place. And so this will increase the operating transfers out towards.
So moved.
Seven.
Been moving seven all in favor? Aye, pass is five zero, eight point four.
All right, eight point four, we got some good news for the Workers' Compensation renewal. We are, this renewal includes about a decrease of nine thousand dollars in premium.
You say nine hundred thousand?
Nine thousand. Too much I've seen, everybody. I wasn't a little more happier at that pace. I looked at dancing, but, uh, yeah, the renewal is nine thousand dollars less and.
Because?
Because our, uh, rate here, let's see here, our, our, this is a word. Our experience modified has decreased. So our, uh, claims and things were positive during this review period.
Right. So our, so it's lower because we're not using.
Yes, it's, it's lower, that's exactly right. So, cause of that, whoever's a couch savers, Mr. Hobbie, you know, good work, goes in with us. And over the years, we've actually saved a lot, actually, just from year to year from what we first.
I know we did last year, I remember, and saved us a lot of money, but implementing some education.
That's right, and that makes a big, big difference.
So we have few claims.
Yeah.
And so we're gonna keep this.
But also, just educating the program. We get bonus.
Most of it's.
Interest going down. Thank you. Everything else.
So it's eight percent, eight percent decrease, that's what it marked out. It's a very positive thing, so definitely recommend the Board accept. I approve the renewal of the Workers' Compensation.
Actually, would you?
Yeah, yeah.
I move that we approve the workers' compensation insurance. Second.
Been moving seven all in favor? Pass is five zero. Okay, thank you, Mr. Perry. Okay. Eight point six.
Captain, Mr. James, Members of the Board, Ms. McDonald. Green, uh, agenda item eight point six is a request for approval of annual collective agreement with MAPS at the school district and MAPS state star. This agreement that we enter into every year. Uh, is the recommendation of the Superintendent that the Board approves this agreement for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year.
So moved.
Been moving seven all in favor? Pass is five zero. Okay, feel they can set. Mr. Big, Mr. Moore.
Yes, sir.
Is that they go?
Yes, sir.
So much stuff happening. They don't sit right here too. Like I told y'all, we're on tempo, you make fire me. Jump on up, you got it. You gotta put the chain on it. All right.
Yes, sir, Mr. James, Members of the Board. Yeah, before you, a request for approval of overnight and outstate travel. Um, outstate travel for basketball to Monroe and Alexandria. Uh, outstate for bands, you know, pirating and, uh, to Lula. And overnight for basketball and athletics. Recommendation of the Superintendent that, uh, you approve this request.
Wait a minute. So we've already approved eight point five? So that was a re-skip.
So we're gonna move that.
That's part of what we're. Okay, okay. So we got eight point seven.
Yeah, we have been waiting on that.
I saw one.
Second.
Been moving seven all in favor?
Aye.
Pass is five zero.
Thank you.
Okay. Eight point eight?
Eight point eight, eight point eight, Mr. James, Members of the Board, is the recommendation to approve the contract for family nation, um, consultant. Uh, Ms. Paula Morris has been working with the district, uh, this is her third year. This will be her third year. She assists our PTA units and making certain there, you know, according to state and federal guidelines. She has been very influential this year, uh, since, since the start of school and making certain that our units are up and moving with the transition reorganization of schools that required that, uh, new boards were, uh, officers were elected. So she made certain that all of the transitional, uh, boards, uh, had, made certain they had the guidance, had their paperwork filed and so forth. So we want to continue to, uh, employ Ms. Morris for the remainder of this school year.
So moved.
Second.
Been moving seven all in favor?
Aye.
Pass is five zero. Okay, eight point nine.
Mr. James, uh, request that we remove eight point nine and I will accept responsibility for that because Mr. Thomas did submit that, uh, that drop off prevention plan, but I have not had time to review it.
Okay, eight point eleven.
Eight point two.
We moved that.
That's also part of versus.
Oh, that's.
With eight point eleven, thank you.
Yes, sir. Hey, Mr. James, Members of the Board, Donald Green. Uh, eight point eleven is asking for approval of a line or understanding between, uh, Nassau School District and the AGFC. Uh, and for the youth bill program. Uh, as you can see, it kind of outlines, uh, it's almost like a form of adult education. Uh, these are some of our form of students who will be coming back. It wouldn't interfere with the day-to-day operations of normal school hours, if they are in school hours. Uh, but it will be to, uh, coach students up and train them in, uh, workforce in the areas of construction and auto commission path. Uh, make C and A, certain patients.
So many, how many kids, uh, do you anticipate being a part of?
Um, the youth bill has probably thirty, thirty-five kids somewhere in, in, around, if I had to put it on.
And so this will be an in-kind partnership. Youth bill is, uh, spearheaded by AGFC, but as an in-kind partnership, they need access to facilities.
It used to be under the city, that's why. I mean, I'm just saying, we had.
At one time, was it thousands of dollars?
Yes. No, I'm talking about before then.
Okay.
Okay. When I was male, it was the first person. We in the shade, do you?
Yes, sir.
And we had to see you. That's why I was asking how many kids, because it's for younger kids and young adults, right?
Yes, sir.
So moved.
Second.
Been moving seven all in favor?
Aye.
Pass is five zero. Eight point twelve.
Mr. James, Members of the Board, you have before you, uh, the twenty-four, twenty-five athletic schedules for boys and girls basketball and, uh, baseball. And so, uh, we seek your approval of those schedule.
So.
Y'all look at me.
Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass.
Thank you.
Y'all have. Eight point thirteen.
Okay, that's moving.
I am never see it no more. It's in. James, my little you, my child, I will never see it. I let her use it. I'm just telling you, I got two people.
I use a Mac and he use a PC.
Shut up, you, yo. When you had your PC, you knew, that's why you lost that job.
Keep your bags, I need the charger.
Uh, item eight point thirteen is request for approval of the Hub Network Consultant Services for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And we are asking for this request to meet the district goal, uh, wanting to decrease student conflict through SEL, uh, social and emotional learning, and to create a positive educational experience. And a little background information with the heightened community issues that we've had. Our goal is to help students become more self-aware and socially aware. Basically produce a productive citizens outside of the classroom in the years ahead. In addition, is our goal to, um, is our desire to aid the students in better understanding of thoughts and emotions. Um, to develop self-control and to develop a more, uh, have more empathy for the others, uh, within their community and the world around them. So, um, it is the recommendation of the Superintendent that the Board of Trustees approve the request of consulting services for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Let me add a question. They are consultants out of way.
That.
Refresh my memory, because I know we did it before.
Uh, yes, we did it last year.
Okay.
They're based out of that.
They're based out of that.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So moved. Thank you.
Second, second.
Been moving seven all in favor?
Aye.
Pass is five zero. Okay, administrator, nine point one, Ms. Butler.
Mr. James, Members of the Board, Ms. Butler, Superintendent training, uh, in her role as, um, fellow coordinator. And Ms. Butler, back to the all the new regulations and guidelines.
And where life is done.
Are extremely rare that she does. And so you have in your board for, uh, a some, an overview of the S thirty funds.
Okay. All right, board calendar. Anything that needs to be added or taken off? Uh, that was Ms. Davis. She'll pick the calendar for us. Superintendent update, nine point three.
Um, I have nothing, Mr. James.
Nothing?
We'll discuss my, I'll be sorry. Let me, excuse me. I do, please. You shut down and throw me off.
You need a charger?
As the Board is aware, as my presentation is. As the Board is aware, accountability scores did come out.
Good, you have a day review for possible?
None at this time.
You ain't done nothing, see, you ain't done it by.
Ah, that.
Don't give me that much time.
Do we still have? It's none to do, we still have, uh, Dr. Morrison. Morrison, do we still have about the same number of kids who are, uh, in, uh, what you call it? Learning? Do you know any disabilities in our district?
I don't have the updated number of students who are in, uh, with IEPs, but I will get that information for you.
But they are, you wouldn't think that there's been a significant drop or anything.
Not a significant decrease because we have not had a, a significant decrease in, um, our general population, our overall population. For some reason, my PowerPoint won't pull up, but I will discuss what I have prepared here.
Good.
I'll do it now. Uh, so accountability scores did come out. So for, uh, our graduation, and I won't show this. It's very similar playing host. Here it is. We're proud to report a ninety-two point five percent graduation rate for our, the Natchez Adams School District, which is. And you're aware, we are committed to results. We are all accountable for students, uh, learning because results matter. At the end of the day, it's about the student outcomes. To give you an idea of, uh, our pathway, in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, the district's graduation rate was eight four point two percent. We have steadily increased since that time. We had a slight dip in twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, but we have posted as of this year, the highest graduation rate that we have seen in several years. So that is in alignment with our growth. We remain committed to challenging and growing our students and staff because in NASD, excellence is the expectation. We're, the, the posting of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, uh, of school accountability ratings. Uh, Gilmore, McLauren Elementary, B. Morgantown Elementary, B. Suzie B. West, C. Natchez High and Natchez Early College, C. Natchez Middle School, D. An overall school rating of A, C. So, uh, on the other day, and I'll keep going. Question was asked, how close were we? And I was actually talking to Mr. Pritchard, he wanted to know how close were us. For some reason, they had escaped me, so I went and looked. So here we have the state cut scores for letter designations. And A is six hundred sixty-eight points or more. For B, five hundred ninety-nine points to six hundred sixty-six, six hundred sixty-seven points. A C, five hundred thirty-six points to five hundred ninety-eight points. A D, four thirty-nine and five thirty-five. And L, fewer than four hundred eighty-nine points. Natchez Adams School District was at a five-nine, we were nine points away.
I know, you have it down on that.
Just to give an idea of where we've come from, in twenty nineteen, we were at five twenty-seven D. So we've steadily increased to other point where we are now.
What year was it?
Twenty nineteen. Five twenty-seven D. What are we doing? Progress in motion. We have worked, as you all know, the reorganization of schools was, uh, that was a specific purpose, was just not about enrollment. It was about trying to make certain that we have a systems-based approach to how we're functioning in Natchez Adams School District. And so some of the things, uh, that we've implemented, uh, professional learning communities, we are not doing PLCs. We are a professional learning community. So everything is about continuous improvement and continuous growth. We're working on similar to identical, which means that we want to make certain that we have equitable, students have equitable access to high-quality instruction. As you all aware, we have variations among elementary schools. We are trying to close that gap to make certain that there is no variation. So when you go into Mr. Fields' third grade class, ELA class, or go to Dr. Morrison's third grade ELA class, you have the same access to the same high-quality instruction and high-quality materials. We're focused on results, data-driven and data-focused. Our principals know, our administrators know, everything has a data point attached to it. We need to monitor and track our progress towards our growth goal. It's one thing to have data available, but if you just have it available and you never do anything with it, there's no sense of collecting data. But we're actually using those data points to monitor progress. And then again, a systems-based approach to our leadership, simplifying our vision. So the vision for instruction is the same from West Elementary pre-k all the way up to Natchez High School with Mrs., with Mrs. Reynolds. Uh, we're clarifying our goals so that everybody is aware of what those goals are. So every month, we provide principals, these are the goals. This month, it, for August, was one hundred percent of our, uh, teachers receive observations at least once a week. One hundred percent of our administrators are in classrooms, ninety percent of the instructional day. And then we are communicating our priorities and tracking our progress to our stakeholders so that everyone is aware, this I know, this is how close we are to our goals. And then making certain that our arrows align. I have a joke with, uh, Dr. Marty, Dr. Marty is, she's everywhere. So sometimes her fish, they swim all over the place. They go in the right direction, they just, they kind of zigzag. But we want to make certain that everybody, all of our arrows are focused in the same direction. Our goal is to be an A-rated school.
Yeah.
Is to be an A-rated school. So those are my goals.
Let me, let me say something here, because I think the community to a certain extent is aware of it. But maybe, uh, I want to really commend all of the teachers and administration because when I look at a C for our district, I know it's actually at least a B based on the, uh, the composition of the students that we have, the socio-disadvantaged, socioeconomic disadvantaged kids that we have in terms of school lunches. All of the kids who are, are in need in terms of those kids, who, what, what's that word, Zans? The shortage, the kids who are, uh. Huh?
Give to the exceptional, exceptional student?
No, the ones who, who need help.
Exceptional.
Is that what we call them, exception? But in any case, I know we've always had like twenty to twenty-five percent of our student population assisted of those kids. On you fact that those kinds of variables in, and say you've got a C in this who district where they shortage your funds or whatever the case may be, you've done a tremendous job, and I, I look forward to it being even better. But I think the community needs to know that, and the teachers need to know that because you should be more proud of the fact that once you factor in those variables, you, you know, we're still at least a C. And, and, and God help us because we will be, and hopefully, uh, Zans, we're gonna hold you to us being an A. I'm just kidding.
Mr. Wes, it has always been my contention, either as a teacher, as a principal, that if there can be blue ribbon schools, which are schools of excellence, with a distinction of excellence, there can be blue ribbon schools in our area. We want to be one of them one day.
Oh, I believe you. And I'd just like to ask the Board to give y'all a hand. Now, don't you all clap for yourself.
And I will, I will agree with you, Mr. Wes. Uh, research is clear that when you're dealing with children from low socioeconomic and dealing with children from poverty, the dynamics are very different when you're dealing with students who are from higher socioeconomic levels. And I agree to commend not only our administrators, but our teachers, all employees in Natchez Adams School District because the work is difficult. And I'm quite certain sometimes those people go home and they're not very fond of me, but I commend them because they don't come here to work because of me or for us, they come here for the children. And so we, we commend them for their dedication to what they do. So you don't have a problem with snapping the whip?
No.
Well, you used to hide. He was like one person. I know that you're capable of this. I know what the naysayers will do, I say, and I just believe that we're going to show what our children are capable of doing when they are provided quality instruction and the right resources.
And, and also, Sandra, the, the D, the reorganization plan was meant to also target certain things so that, that we understand that we're in, that, that's been anticipated.
That is, we take, transition has not been easy, and if anybody's studied transition, we know that there are stages of transition. There have been some challenges in our transition, but when we sit among teachers, uh, the district of administrators, we don't leave from the office, we're in buildings. And so when we, we sit in among principals and teachers and we hear the dialogue and we see the collaboration that is occurring in our buildings, we know that they are only going to get stronger. So we're excited to see, see the results.
Everybody stay safe.
Uh, I would like to say that I want to thank you for sending your students to Allcorn State University this past weekend for High School Day. It was great to see them and I think your kings and queens enjoyed themselves, they got, they got a chance to chat and chew with our royal court. So it was really phenomenal and I, I, once again, just want to thank y'all. Go break, have a good break.
Right, I thank all you all for what you do. Um, and I'm, I'm gonna go out and blame this again, it ain't for doing it though. I know that you all gonna get paid near as much as what you do. Dealing with these kids every day, I just deal with them too. I can't do. Don't put your hands on you or whatever you have to do, it's hard, I understand. And your, your boss, along with up to the side, they have stretched to the board. And I'm telling you about the principals need more salary.
I mean.
So I'm saying, like, in this next year or whatever, salary need to be a salary adjustment. Now, I ain't saying what you gonna get, I ain't gonna put it too loud, but I'm just saying. There's something need to be done. So I'm gonna put my neck out, I'm gonna say something gonna be done, but I can't just go pay them this much or this much, but. Ms. McNabb made that clear to us and all board really, really down on everything. Dr. Bunch, come to education, she was supposed to pay y'all a hundred thousand dollars. But we gonna have to do something and we want to find it somewhere else and we might have to get, you know, GoFundMe or whatever. Y'all take a vacation, they church or something, you know, and just bring it and we gonna do something. But we thank you all.
All right, most of you have, so the termination?
Second.